...of the walls touch the outside. Once you're in this room, you want to stay here until the tornado threat has passed completely. In order to be extra safe once in your shelter room, the best thing to do is to get low to the ground. So crouch down on the floor. If you're in the back room, the best thing to do is get in the bathtub. Once you're crouched down on the floor, you want to be sure to protect your head. So cover it with your arms if you brought a pillow with you, if you brought a helmet with you. Keep your head protected. You also want to have your cellphone with you so that you can keep track on the radar or through emergency alerts so that you're sure once the threat has passed. Today, we're going to talk about how you can prepare for disasters before they strike. The first step is to get your family or your household together and talk about emergency planning. The first step there is to identify all the hazards that we face living here in North Texas. And it's no surprise to anyone that the list is very long. So identify those hazards and talk about how you would respond to all of those. The next thing you want to do is create a family or household communications list. Doesn't have to be a long list. The best thing to do is actually write it on a smaller piece of paper so that once you write down all the contacts you need, you can fold it up and put it in your wallet, in your backpack, or even keep a copy in your car. It's really important to include all the contact numbers, meaning cell phones for everyone in your household, but also numbers like your insurance companies so that if you cannot use your cellphone for whatever reason after an emergency, you have all those important numbers already written down. The third thing you want to do with your family before a disaster is to build a family emergency kit. This is the kit that you would take to your shelter location in case you're there for a long period of time, or if you had to leave your house in the middle of the night during a disaster. You want stuff in here that will sustain you and your family. So important things that you should put in your kit: water bottles and snacks like granola bars; change of clothing for each person in the household if you have room in your kit; some cash in case you need to use it later; that contact communications list that you put together, keep a copy in there; any important documents that your family needs, copies of insurance, information for your house, for your car, pets, any of that that you want with you, make a copy, put it in your kit; chargers for cell phones. I need glasses, so I keep an extra pair of glasses in my kit as well. If you have pets, also remember that you need to make a kit for your pet to include food, water, copies of their vaccination records, maybe even a toy, so that when you leave with your pet during an emergency, you have stuff for them, too. North Texas is the most disaster-prone area in the United States, and I don't say that to scare you, but I say that to say that you need to prepare before disaster strikes. So follow all the steps we talked about today, and you'll be more prepared for the next one.
Hi, this Officer Luna with the Dunkinville Traffic Unit. Just letting you know that tomorrow, August 10th, Dunkinville ISD starts school back. Letting you know with the school's lights are flashing, if you do receive a citation, the fines can double. Just remember, while you're in the school zone, pay attention to all the kids that are walking, and also to put your cell phones down.
Hi, my name is Lauren Sanchez, Regional Emergency Manager for the cities of Cedar Hill, Dunkinville, DeSoto, and Lancaster. Fire Prevention Week is celebrated from October 8th through October 14th, and the Dunkinville Fire Department would like to remind all residents that fire prevention and fire safety start with you. Always pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know that kitchen fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? That's why it's important for all residents to understand that fire prevention and cooking safety is extremely important. Today, we're going to talk about the recipe of home fire safety to keep you safe in your home. Unattended cooking is the leading cause of home fires and deaths. Always stand by your pan. If you leave the kitchen, turn off the burner. Remember to always turn pot handles away from the front of the stove towards the back so that they cannot accidentally be bumped over or pulled over the front of the stove. Always have a lid and oven mitt near your pan when cooking so that if a small grease fire starts, you can take the lid, slide it over the pan, and turn off the burner. When grilling, always make sure that your grill is in an open space and not near anything that can catch fire, like the side of your house, decking rails, or even tree branches. Also, never leave a grill unattended when it is in use. Clubbing and cooking don't mix. After a night out, order in. For more general information on cooking safety and Fire Prevention Week, visit www.fpw.org. And for more information for kids and cooking safety, visit sparky.org.
Hello, champions. I'm Officer Michelle Arias, the Crime Prevention Officer for the Dunkinville Police Department. Today, I'm here to let you know what each permitted solicitor must wear if they're coming to your door. We have recently received several reports of suspicious people impersonating city or utility company employees.
Hi, I'm here with Encore. As a reminder, each permitted solicitor should be wearing a reflective vest like this. The vest should display a pictured ID on the front side and a permit number on the back side. As always, if you see a suspicious person or suspicious activity, call 911 and report it immediately.
My name is Thalia Lopez. I'm the Crime Victim Advocate for Dunkinville Police Department. Crime Victim Advocate, what we do is that we help and support victims of violent crimes with education, information, and further resources. I work with a lot of domestic violence victims and their families. I provide support as well as resources. That includes the Women's Shelter, Genesis Women's Shelter, The Family Place, that's shelter for men, women, and children; counseling support, because that's really important; trauma support services of North Texas, as well as the Victim Intervention Program by Parkland. They provide those services. As well as immigration, I do assist with the UVisa process, as well as mosaic services. So there's an array of resources and services for victims that are experiencing domestic violence. Victims can contact me through my direct office line. That is 972-707-3832. They can always give me a call. I receive text messages as well, but I'm here to give them support and information.
Okay, it's 6 o'clock. We're going to go ahead and start with our work briefing session. The time is 6 o'clock PM. So if you would, we'll start out with discussion of the agenda items. City manager.
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. So we'll start with the consent agenda, just so the audience knows we're getting started. Item 4A is the minutes, so I'll skip right over that. 4B, consider a resolution approving the proposal for a city-paid employee and retire medical prescription and dental claim with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for a one-year agreement. I'll do my best to answer questions this evening. For emergency reasons, the Assistant HR Director was not able to join us this evening, but anybody have any questions?
So it's increasing for employees, 0.08, and then reduction for retirees, 5%.
And it's the group, the group medical and the dental, so we can get better. So one is up, the other's down a little bit, so that we're trying to minimize the impact to the employees and get better overall expense rate for this.
Because they were not getting dental at first. Getting dental is just an 8% increase.
It was previously voluntary for the employee, for general health. So the employee is paid 1% previously. 4C, consider a resolution authorizing the final payment of $545,435.78 to Core Construction Services of Texas for pay applications 18 and 19 for the construction fire station number 271. Director Jackson and Mr. Brock are both here to help answer any questions you may have. 4D, consider an ordinance amending fiscal year 23, 24 budget by appropriating revenue and amending expenditures for the utility fund to cover increased Trinity River authority expenses. Ms. Otte or Director Bryan are here to help answer questions on that.
Questions?
4E, consider a resolution approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Dunkinville and Dallas County to provide highway accident investigation services in an amount not to exceed $60,770. She's diagramming this here somewhere to answer a few questions on that.
Does anybody have questions on this one?
No.
4F, Council to consider a resolution approving the assignment of private activity bond authority to Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. I myself am happy to help answer questions, I believe. Councilmember Coates is the director on the board.
I am on there, and I would like some clarity on what that's about.
And I'm going to ask, is Mr. Brock in the room? There he is. So this was, I'm going to ask him to help me with this, but this agreement came to us, and I wasn't comfortable in signing this until this went to council for council to authorize me to execute this. So it's my understanding from the research that I did is this agreement is between the various cities. So there's more than the Southwest. And so what it looks like from what I researched is they're asking each of the cities to authorize them to do business in their municipality. Is that correct?
Yep. And it's something we annually do, is approve this resolution, authorize it signature so that they can continue operating.
How long have we been doing this?
It's been like 20 or 30 years.
Are there any costs to the City of Dunkinville? There are no costs.
There's no cost for us. It's just our council is authorizing us to continue to do business with them. It's really all of those. And they do issue debt, but it's not debt that's reflected back to the city or causes us to have to fund it.
That's good.
What, when you say we've been doing this, I read it and I don't understand. I see properties and mortgages. What is it that this consists of? What is the actual thing that they're doing?
It's my understanding they're helping place low-income families into housing, and they help underwrite with those bonds, down payments, and the cost of housing for low-income families.
Okay. So you didn't say that either.
But that's what they do.
City attorney, I guess, more than city attorney. If they have any projects that they're bringing, they would have to go through the usual process as well.
Yes, they would have to come to us, and they'd have to get the appropriate zoning and permitting, et cetera. Most of their focus is throughout Dallas County. We don't have any facilities that they're underwriting here that I'm aware of.
I mean, there's about three or four different, it's like adult living facilities. It's one in DeSoto, it's one in Mass., but yeah, we don't have any.
We don't have any.
None that they're even considering.
And whether Dunkinville considers.
And it helps us meet our obligation as a fair housing entity to support low-income families.
Okay. Any other questions?
Then that concludes the consent agenda.
City Secretary, can we go over the city council calendar now?
Thank you, Mayor. For August, we do, and it's not on your calendar, but there is a special council meeting on the 27th for board and commission interviews and delegations. It's at 6 o'clock. For September, September 3rd, council meeting is the public hearing on the budget. September 5th is the budget workshop here in the briefing room, and that one's at 9:00 AM. And September 16th is Mexican Independence Day celebration, and you all have a card for the parade. And that, we have a council meeting on the 17th, and that's the public hearing on the tax rate and adoption of the budget as well. On September 26th is coffee with the mayor, and September 30th is the fiscal year 24th. October, the October 1st is National Night Out. That will, we canceled the council meeting on October 1st. The first council meeting will be October the 15th, and coffee with the mayor on October the 24th. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because next Tuesday's, the 5th Tuesday, the 29th, suggest that we can make a plan to do something. There's a panel, whether it's a joint meeting with EDC and/or PNC or whatever else.
And to that point, I was going to suggest that on the 29th, we do maybe, I know we were talking about the status of bond projects, and maybe that could be up tonight, that we can have that discussion.
Do you want to get agreement to that tonight, right now?
Just throwing it out there, would anyone have a problem with it? Because I know we talked about during the budget workshop that we want to revisit where we are in the status of our bonds and our bond project.
I'm sorry, what date were you looking at?
The 29th.
We could use it if council would be open to it. We really want to start some discussions on capital permit planning, so we could.
Consensus, go ahead and plan on doing that? Unanimous.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Council, Mr. Wilson also asked me when might be a good time he would like to meet with you again, and was wondering if maybe after the budget workshop on the 5th, if that could be a good time or not.
What's the issue?
That's the ongoing conversations about work plan and those types of things with Mr. Wilson.
Going around the table, everybody?
What was the date?
All right, thank you. Items for individual consideration, 5C is going to be full, is my understanding, is that correct? That's my understanding. Okay, so we'll now go into briefing and presentations. Item 3A is city council to receive a briefing on lead service line replacement, LSLR, grant inventory, and the process. Matt, do you have some guests here?
Yes, we're joined by MRB Group. We have Ms. Brooke and Mr. Henry here that's going to help elaborate on everything they've been working on for us and help us out with. Carry on.
Good evening. Yeah, distracted with time. It's good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone else. So my name is Brooke Thompson. I'm the Client Funding Manager at MRB Group. And so I've been working with the City of Dunkinville on a plethora of funding opportunities, and I've had the opportunity of looking at grants for maybe some upcoming items and things that are on the council's priority list, and some things that could come up potentially in the near future. But as for the lead service line replacement, back in May of 2023, there was an engineering firm that submitted a PIF, which is a preliminary information form, to Texas Water Development Board on behalf of the city for the lead service line replacement. So there's actually two programs. So you'll see LSLI, which is your lead service line inventory, and LSLR, which is your replacement. Two separate programs, but your funding is wrapped into one. So on your lead service line inventory, that was mandated by the EPA on, in late 2022, early 23. That is mandatory for everyone. The due date on that is October 16th of '24. Now, the inventory does not have to be completed at 100%, but it does have to be started. We do have to give TCU something. So Water Development Board, it takes them a little bit of time after submitting some things to determine if your entity is eligible for funding. Well, lo and behold, we're almost there to inventory time, and Water Development Board says, hey, you guys, you could be eligible for some things. Now, we're thinking, maybe inventory, what does this look like? But we're eligible for the full $21 million. So that's for inventory and replacement. So inventory comes first, then replacement. So $21 million, it's a lot. That's also based on if we were to replace 100% of your service lines. Now, we don't know the percentage of the service lines to be replaced until the inventory is done. So council, Mr. Finch, you guys gave us approval to go ahead and do the application for this said program, which we did. We got that submitted, and then we did have some follow-up questions, which we'll submit the final documents for that tomorrow. So Dunkinville ranked number 120 in the IUP, which is the Intended Use Plan for Water Development Board. You also were what they considered disadvantaged, meaning you were eligible for some loan forgiveness in this. For this program, it is 51% loan forgiveness, 49% loan. So keep in mind that it's two separate programs. So for the replace, the inventory part, it was $561,000. So with the $561,000, you guys have hired LJA to do your desktop work. Desktop work basically tells us how we're going to do the inventory, what service lines need to be inventoried, what analysis needs to be done, and they also create the template for us to go and do the inventory. So when we say inventory, what we're going to do, we're going to go pop the tops on the meter boxes to see if there's lead there. But we're also not going to check anything that is after July, July of 1988. So that was part of the EPA's rules. Anything after July of 1988 probably doesn't have lead or copper or any of those things, so don't even worry about it. We're just going to mark it as that, and we're going to move on. So also with that, we'll do inventory. Inventory will determine replacement. So we had the $561,000 for inventory, and then we have about $20 million left for replacement. So that 20 million, we did the application on the full 21 million. So that twenty million, we did the application on the full twenty-one, because one thing we didn't want to do is just let free money go, right? So we did it for the full. Our commitment will be based on the twenty-one million, but you don't have to take it, you'll only use it as you need it. So for the twenty-one million that's left after inventory, that is also fifty-one percent loan forgiveness, forty-nine percent loan. So it'll sit about ten point two million dollars of a loan. Now, that sounds like a big number. It is a big number, it doesn't sound like what it is. So, but what that is, you don't have to start paying that back until your project ends. So that's the good thing about it. With our schedule right now, we don't have construction ending until at least two thousand and twenty-eight, and then your repayment then begins with Water Development Board. Also, that is over, you will decide with your financial advisor if you want a twenty-year, thirty-year, forty-year repayment note as well. And then your, your interest rate will be determined at closing. So I said a lot, does anyone have any questions? Because I go.
If you don't mind, Mayor.
Yeah, okay.
Just brief council, if you would, for me, explain to them we had to go back and redo our Q process to make sure it met the grant and then the requirements and kind of where we're at.
Yes, sir. So, yes, thank you for that. So we did have to go and kind of backtrack a little bit, because again, it does take Water Development Board quite a bit to make these determinations of funding. So the city of Duncanville had already started the whole contracting out for inventory, but we had to kind of back up, because we wanted to make sure whatever you spent in your inventory would be covered under those funds. So it took us probably a good month to go back, try to track down everything that had been done prior to Mr. Finch, see if there was any paperwork or anything out there, what procurement was done, and then go back and follow Water Development Board's procurement rules to make sure the city was in a good position to be reimbursed for any money that they spent for the inventory services. So that did take a bit of time, and I do appreciate everyone that was involved with the city and helping us make it a really smooth process. So thank you, Mayor, Brooke, for that.
And then as part of that process, council, just so you're aware, so, and Matt, feel free to jump in here, but we had to go through an RFQ for engineering, for fiscal, and for the.
Bond council. Yes, and so for, for city, anytime you go after Water Development Board funding, and there, and you're considered, okay, and you're considered disadvantaged, meaning you have to follow the disadvantaged business enterprise rules. You have to do an RFQ for engineering, for bond council, and for financial advisor. But that's just across the board. And so you'll see anytime you go after Water Development Board funds, you'll have to do an RFQ for those, for those projects. Yes, sir.
So what qualifies you for disadvantaged?
It's your, your median household, household income. Yes, sir. And so what we use with that is the American Community Survey, and it's for whichever year that they have up. I think we follow twenty twenty-two with this one, so next year it'll be twenty twenty-threes, and then whatever the census is, and so you have to fall under seventy-five percent of the state household income limit.
So Mayor, Council, so we did the RFQ, we've identified firms for engineering, bond council, and for fiscal. Okay, and those are all contingent basically on the grant award. So you'll see some resolutions in the near future, finishing that process and authorizing those agreements contingent on the grant funding.
And I do think it's important to note that none of us, meaning the engineering, bond council, finance, a financial advisor, no one gets paid until, unless you're funded. So a lot of the things that we do, and a lot of work we've done with this, is just, it is, is contingent upon funding. And so no one has been paid by the city of Duncanville or by anyone else until you guys receive funding.
Any others? I want questions. Thank you. Well, you're.
I'm still next.
You're not anywhere.
I'm still here for a little bit.
All right, item three B, city council to receive briefing on upcoming grant opportunities to financially support strategic initiatives identified as priority items for the city of Duncanville. Ms. Thompson.
So I know one big thing on your list has been your AMI, which is your water meter replacement, and so we have been working diligently with Mr. Ryan and Mr. Finch and a lot of the others in trying to get this going. We're just about ready to put out your RFQ for, for the meters. It's going through its final review, and then it'll be sent to the city. It'll be sent to the city then. And then we're also going to go after Water Development Board funding, because you were considered disadvantaged this year, we're praying that it stays the same moving into next year. And what it does will allow you to then be, it looks a little different. So in March, we'll put in a PIF, and that'll be for CWSRF. And so there's so many acronyms, which is the State Revolving Fund. So there's the Clean Water and Drinking Water State Revolving Funds. And so we'll put out a PIF under those in March, March fifth, to be exact. And so what we're hoping to bring forth is to rank high enough in the, in the IUP that you'll receive reimbursement for those water meters. So that reimbursement and those disadvantaged looks a little different. So under lead service line, you're fifty-one percent loan forgiveness, forty-nine percent loan, but under SRF, you're seventy percent loan forgiveness and thirty percent loan. So it looks pretty good. Looks pretty good. So, so we've, yes, we've been working hard to get that. I know that was something big, a big priority of not only Mr. Finch, but really of the council, and so we're moving forward, we're getting that done. And then we spoke about, oh my gosh.
I have a list here for you.
Do you, can I see the list? I want to make sure I get this list. I was like assuming it was going, but you should never assume anything.
Safe routes to school?
Yes. So safe routes to school, safe routes to.
Or sidewalk.
Yeah, which is your sidewalk, that falls under Tech dot. So Tech dot has the Transportation Alternatives Program, which actually only comes every other year. So two thousand and twenty-five is the year for those projects. Each entity can submit up to three projects, not including an active transportation plan. Starting in two thousand and twenty-three, Tech dot allowed cities to submit on active transportation plans, and if eligible, then you would receive up to a hundred thousand dollars for said plans. As of right now, with Duncanville being a disadvantaged community, any program, any project, I'm sorry, that is funded under the Tech dot Transportation Alternatives Program is one hundred percent reimbursable. So we have started kind of talking about, is this something that the city would like to do this coming up year, and then what projects look good? And talking with Mr. Finch, I thought, because you do have a school right down here, which has some connectivity, you have some downtown areas, that we would collaborate with the district and do a safe routes to school program, or safe routes to school plan. And so what that plan does, it allows us to identify those like high, high problem areas within the school, school zone. So if maybe there needs to be a flasher there, maybe, maybe we need to slow down the speed limits, sign some, we need to put in some crosswalks, we need to look at ADA ramps, maybe add some additional signage. It allows us to look at those things. But it also allows us to look at how many kids walk to school, how many kids bike, how many are dropped off, how many ride the bus. So we know, do we, is that an area that we need to look at redoing sidewalks in, maybe it's somewhere we need to add sidewalks? That's an option under that program as well. And so that can also be wrapped up into your active transportation plan, so we're not taking away from one of your projects in total. So I, in the year before last, I wrote seven grant applications for that program, five were funded, and we had about twenty-three million dollars in funding received under that, which with one of them being four point four million dollars just for one entity. So I'm pretty familiar with the program. So that's actually really exciting when I'm on school board in Hillsborough. So anything that we can do to make it safer for those babies getting to and from school, but also providing connectivity and walkability for your citizens, and some safety pedestrian improvements is, is really great. What else we got? We have so much.
We did, we did water wastewater lines, TWDB.
Yes.
And drainage.
So yes, we've been talking about some water line improvements, some sewer line improvements, which all will come under the SRF program as well. Another thing about the Water Development Board project, any PIF that we submit on behalf of the city, we do not charge for any preliminary application. So Tech dot has a preliminary application, Water Development Board has preliminary applications. We do not charge for those. Any application that we do submit, actual application underwater development board, our fee is wrapped into your funding. So we're never paid off top, we do our job, and, and really that's the end of it, because we want to help our communities. Anything with Tech dot, then that's negotiated, but I never do anything without you all's permission, except for look for funding for you. But we never write anything, we never move forward with anything without your permission.
Drainage fifth.
Oh, yes. Oh my goodness, there's so many things. So we've been looking at some drainage master plans and some of the drainage issues around the city, and one other program that's out there right now is the Flood Infrastructure Fund, which is through Water Development Board. And I was just looking at their agenda, and it's three hundred and seventy-five million dollars has been allocated to this program. And one thing we want to do is go after some of those funds, right? And so when we do said plans, like a drainage plan, those projects then get put into your state plan, your state water plan, and then those are some of the top projects that are pulled for funding by the state. So we want to definitely get a plan done for one, then we want to determine some projects from there, and then submit those projects to your state and regional water plan, so they are prioritized for some additional free funding. So there's a step to the, to the free money, but you know, if we're patient, we can, we can get through it and make those steps and, and get some of your projects done. Yes, sir.
But we do have to have a drainage plan in place first before.
Yes, sir. Because projects have to have a way of being identified, and so typically it's through that plan. We've just finished up three of those plans. We finished two drainage and one flood, and so those were all done through the Flood Infrastructure Fund, so we're part of the first round. And then all the projects that were identified and those got put into the state plan that was approved on September first. So it makes them eligible, top eligibility in prioritization, geez, that was a word hard, we're safe for some reason, next year for funding through Water Development Board.
So city manager, are we taking steps toward the plan? So that's something that Brooke and Henry and Matt and I have been discussing, question of, of how to fund that. I think you gave me an estimate of a hundred thousand, or less? Your drainage master plan?
We're looking around two fifty.
Okay, well, okay, they're at that price, but anyway. So I think that, that's part of the question, right? Whether or not we go for the fifth funds to fund the drainage master plan, which will delay us a little bit, or whether or not we can fund that through alternative sources and then go after the implementation funds. That's kind of where we've got to have some additional conversations about that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So city manager, that's something we might be discussing on that October. Yes, yes, or maybe even before, because the work keeps pressure on me, she needs an answer on that. So. Even better.
Well, some, okay, so some of the things like Tech dot, so I would, I did get a call from Tech dot that their, so their call for projects is usually about November. Well, this year they backed it up to October, but the preliminary application is due in January. So those are some things that we want to start thinking about now, just because how my team does things, we do the bulk of the work that's needed for any application in the preliminary application with the anticipation that we're going to get invited for a full application. So I'd rather spend the time beforehand getting everything done, that way we have given ourselves a little leeway when it comes time to an app, to submit the full application, to kind of find to those details. And then for anything with the SRF, that's March first, but those things start to kind of overlap each other a little bit, and then for the fifths, that's April. So then you have multiple projects, you know, for submitting nine or ten different grants for three different projects, we want to make sure that we have allocated enough time to properly create a really good quality application. What else we got?
The last one was, I've had three or four council members ask me about railroad crossing money, so I asked Brooke to look at that, that grant specifically, and I'll let you report to them.
Yes, so I did look at your area at Camp Wisdom. Oof, that's, that's a booger. And then I spent a bit of time looking at the Department of Transportation, their railroad crossing elimination grant. So the only thing that is kind of, kind of troubles me is that we don't want to close that crossing. And so I've had one of our streets engineers kind of look at it and look at things with me, and there are some alternatives to, to fixing it, and whether it's bringing up the elevation of the street or doing some other things, but I don't feel that that project is, falls under that specific grant, just because we do not want to, we're not eliminating the crossing. And so I don't want to spend a lot of your time or our time or, you know, anyone else's at that, because now, then we would have to get the NSF, which is a whole different ballgame, involved. And so what we're going to do is do a, start looking at a feasibility analysis of other alternatives, because if I'm correct, that's a part of the twenty eighteen, that's part of our previous bond package, so we definitely want to move on that, because it's, it is a priority I know of a lot of yours. And it's just, it's a hazard, it is a hazard. And so we're going to be looking at some alternatives. Yes, ma'am. We're going to look at some alternatives to that, and then I'll report that back to Mr. Finch, and he can give you, give you all our report.
So what I heard, sounds great, and then we're qualified, qualifying, because we're broke. But I heard reimbursement, reimbursement, which means we put the cost paid upfront, and then we're reimbursed. Is that how this is?
So how, Water Development Board, you do not put up anything. So you'll do the reimburse, so the reimbursements look different from state agency to state agency. So for Water Development Board, we'll submit a reimbursement request, so theirs is not even called a reimbursement request, it's called an outlay. We'll submit an outlay to Water Development Board, and then they will release your money into an escrow account, and then you'll write your check to pay your vendors off of that escrow account. For Tech dot, you will pay upfront, and then they reimburse within thirty days. So they have thirty days to reimburse you.
Thirty days once we submit all of our.
Once you submit the, yes, and it's not as great as you think, it's just invoices and then the copy of your account's check, and then a few other things, but those are some of the things that we also include in any proposal that we do. So I write you a grant, and then I administer it, and then I do your audits with all of your state agencies as well. So it's kind of a one-stop shop, but yes, with Tech dot, it's thirty days.
But most of ours that we're looking at, other than safer routes to school or sidewalks, are all Texas Water Development.
Yes, sir. So you would be out of any funds upfront. And then one thing to add about the fifth, their matching is a little different. So theirs sits at five to ten percent of what the project cost is. So if you did go after a fifth for your drainage master plan or any of your drainage needs, your cost on that would be five to ten percent. It wouldn't be like a thirty percent, a thirty or forty or fifty percent loan, it would just be a five percent match. Yes, sir.
So but back to the railroad crossing elimination program, if I, I went back, you know, I was one of those.
No, you're fine.
Information. So it says, eligible projects and relocation and your elimination, that is part of, but also other means to improve the safety related to the mobility of people and goods, measures to improve safety related to separation, closure, or effect. So it sounds like it, there are other opportunities besides just eliminating.
And if you go to the FAQ in that one, if you're able to, it does give a little bit more breakdown of it, because that's the first thing that got me, and then the first thing that you'll see under eligible projects, it says grading. I was like, oh, okay, we'll take that, we'll do a little bit of grading and see what we can do there. And I even went as far as looking at the planning, and I have submitted a couple of questions. So let me say, it is not completely off the table, and we do have until September twenty-eighth. I've submitted my fair share of questions, including, there, there's nothing actually wrong with the crossing, it's just the elevation and slowly up to it, to see if that isn't identified. So I shouldn't have said it's off, so I do apologize for that. So we do have some questions submitted to them, just takes them a little bit to get them answered.
I just have one comment.
Yes, sir.
The safe routes to school, that kind of piqued my interest. My understanding is the school district expanded their requirement from a mile to two miles for busing. I haven't confirmed it yet. I just heard it Friday and heard it about two or three times over the weekend. So that's potentially a lot more kids walking to school now, so.
Oh, thank you.
I want to get in with the school board and the school district and see, verify that, see what's happening. I've heard it's caused a lot of problems.
Okay, that'd be more of a reason to do a safe routes to school plan, um, just to identify. Identify that. Sorry.
I think you're done, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, item three D briefing and discussion briefing from staff and the MRB group to facilitate discussion among, among council about strategy for potentially developing properties owned by the city and the Dunkerville Community and Economic Development Corporation. Finch.
Yes, Mayor, uh, and I'm going to let Director Barr and, uh, Michael Andola from MRB kind of take the lead on this. This was a request that came in in terms of like a broader discussion about, uh, properties as, as we look at properties, um, without getting into specifics of, of particular properties. And, uh, I'll certainly let Director Barr kind of introduce Michael and, and kind of kick things off.
Yes, good evening. So over the course of the last few weeks, we've been taking a, a look at a number of opportunity sites. Some privately owned, some sites owned by the, by city and some owned by D C E B C. We've been discussing a number of different ways of getting them back into productive use. And what would that look like and strategizing about what that timeline would look like? And also having conversations about some of the highest spend use, best uses and the impact that, that development or redevelopment has on adjacent properties and the timing of all of that. So we've been taking a look, not only at specific properties, but adjacent properties. And the impact, want to make sure that whatever they're developed, developed in a cohesive manner, that it's not a situation where you're looking at it and just like, what happened there? And where was that additional effort? So we reached out to the MRB group. Michael, uh, DiNolo is on the line and he's helped us with put together what that strategy would look like. Timeline of getting these properties back into productive use, identifying maybe which properties are, um, say, a, a little bit less complicated, a little bit less involved and maybe quicker to put back on the, on the tax rolls and one that is maybe going to involve a little bit more efforts. So with that said, I, I leave it to Michael.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So as Victor said, uh, uh, what we're hoping to do tonight is to, uh, uh, make the council comfortable with options that you have with respect to these properties as, as we're contemplating potential reuses. So let me start by just giving you the very, very quick overview of how a process like this works. And then I can go back and give you all the details, but I want to start kind of at the thirty thousand foot level here, right? Uh, so the way communities typically do this is that they have an activity where they, uh, select properties that they want to try to move forward with private development, right? So they go through a process, they pick the properties that they want to dispose of. Secondly, uh, the next logical set of steps is about determining what the city would like to see there. And that's called, uh, or what, what would work on the property, I should really say. It's called the highest and best use study. So you have someone come and look at the property. What does the property look like? What are the conditions around the topology and the, uh, topography rather? The zoning, the utilities and so on like that. What could go on the site, right? The next general set of steps, and I'll go again, I'll go all through this individually in just a minute. But the next set of steps is about issuing the solicitation. That can take a few different forms, uh, but you issue a developer RFP or some equivalent to that. You select a developer and you negotiate a development agreement with the developer where you establish things like, uh, price and conditions of sale. And then, uh, the next set of steps is land use approvals. That's when the developer moves forward and goes and attempts to get land use approval and permits. It's typically at that point that the actual property trans, uh, transfer occurs, the closing, if you will, on the transfer of the property. And then the developer does, uh, the development. So that's the, that's the very quick, uh, overview. I'd like to go through those steps and give you a little bit more detail. And please feel free, if you have questions along the way, just let me know. I'm happy to stop and take them as we go, uh, because we want to make sure that you, you're comfortable with different options that you may contemplate along the way. Uh, so that highest and best use study, right? So we have a property, we've decided this is a property that we'd like to put into private hands for private development, right? Uh, or for that matter, it could be a nonprofit, but we want to get it out of public hands and into private or nonprofit hands. You do this highest and best use study. And that's where, again, you look at all the engineering and architectural aspects, the land use planning aspects. You typically would look to the community's zoning, the community's comprehensive plan and the community's land use regulations, which include those things. Uh, and you say, okay, what's allowable here? What's desired by the community here and what's possible here, right? We also spend that time collecting all the information we can about that property. Are there any known environmental conditions? Is there an abstract of the property available? Is there a boundary survey? Has someone come and done a geotechnical investigation? That's where they go in and look at the soils and see what the soil composition is. We're trying to collect everything that a developer might want to know when they're considering, uh, putting a proposal on the property, right? So that's, that's what's happening in the highest and best use study, uh, time period. So once we're through that, then the next step is developing an RFP, right? Now it can be an RFQ, but we digest an RFP and I can, if someone's interested, I can describe the differences there. But I'm just going to go forward as if this is an RFP, right? In the RFP, the develop, you're going to ask the developer a bunch of questions. You're going to say, uh, to give us your qualifications. You know, how many of these projects have you done in the past? Uh, give us your financial qualifications. You know, what's your source of funding? Uh, what's your, uh, relationship with the bank? What's your credit rating? What's the funds that you have available? What's your financial plan for this project, right? And then obviously that you're also asking what the developer's plan is. How would they intend to develop it, right? What are the likely positive and negative development with respect to, uh, jobs and wages and tax revenue and that kind of thing, right? You're going to ask the developer to do that. And then critically, you're going to have two pieces that are very important. And again, I'm happy to talk through this, but you're going to describe in the process, in the RFP, the selection process and the selection criteria, right? Typically, when you're in this situation, um, you do not go for simply a price-based selection. It's not whoever's just simply going to bid the highest price for the property, right? Communities almost always want to look at what's the maximum value that we can get for that property. That might be price, but that might also be the jobs that are created. It might be, uh, helping a neighborhood revitalize. It might be tax revenue that comes off of that property. It might be any number of things, how it contributes to the overall development of the community and so on and so forth. We want to be specific about what those selection criteria are and then what the weighting of that is, right? So that we're clear and transparent to the developers who might be responding about how, uh, they're going to be evaluated, how their proposal is going to be evaluated, okay? That RFP then gets published and we, uh, we encourage everyone to, uh, put out press releases. We encourage people to talk to developers. We encourage people to get the word out that this is open and available for development. We will typically do, uh, like a site tour. We'll take developers who are interested to the site. Uh, if we have permission to get on the site, which we should since we have ownership, uh, we'll walk them through the site. They'll, they'll see the, uh, they'll see the site. We'll typically hold like a, a question and answer session to answer any ambiguities that the developers see in the RFP, clarify anything that needs to be clarified. And then, uh, we have the, uh, the submission itself, right? So all the developers submit their, uh, their responses to this comprehensive list of questions that we're asking. And we ask them to provide all the documentation that supports those answers. The review process typically has two steps. There's a technical review of the process. And that's done by, uh, by city staff or by, by us or whoever it is that you select to do that. And that is, did the developer respond to everything? Did they provide the right documentation? Did they answer all the questions? Are they a, a qualified proposer? And then, um, if there's anything that is of note that, uh, the review committee wants to look at, right? So that's the technical part of the review. Then it proceeds to the review committee. And the review committee is the committee that scores the developers' proposals based on those criteria that are published in the RFP, right? So that's the, that's the selection process. Then we have a developer and we have a development proposal. And then we enter into some kind of negotiated agreement with the developer that stipulates everything they put in their proposal and the conditions that you're going to want to have in, in there about, uh, their time to action and what happens if they don't take action and what the terms of the transfer might be, okay? Then at that point, and not usually until that point, the developer then, uh, by virtue of being the selected preferred developer and because of the negotiated agreement, then goes in front of your various land use boards, whichever boards is the, it's the typical review process, right? Whatever boards they need to go in front of, whatever departments they need to present to, whatever paperwork they put together. They go through that land use process, presuming they get approval. Then that's when the transaction closes. And then it's just a normal development after that, right? They get the permit, they construct the property, they get the certificate of occupancy, uh, and so on and so forth. If for whatever reason during that negotiation, or if they're not able to secure land use control, then we go back to the next person on the list of that, uh, of the preferred developers, right? The, the second one on the list, and we attempt to negotiate with them, uh, and so on and so forth. Or we simply cancel the RFP at that point. Uh, so those are, there's some different options and different iterations in there, but that's the overall process. So I just said a whole lot of things there. Uh, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer questions or provide clarifications, uh, about the process.
Questions, counsel?
Not, not so much as a question, but a, a thank you. Because, you know, e- everyone at this table has heard over and over again, people saying, want better businesses. Want better places to shop, want restaurants, right? We've been hearing this and that's reflected in our master plan. We're doing an update. I'm, I'm pretty confident it's going to be, we're going to have some of that same language in the master plan. A- and, and we want, you know, to see areas revitalized, right? We hear that a lot. And, and we do have several properties under consideration or, you know, that, that are in key areas that I think we, we've all seen. And even if we have different ideas about what could be done with those properties, we know that there are opportunities, right? Like there definitely are opportunities. And again, I, I want to thank you because, you know, I've been saying things like this for some time and we all have, but we really haven't had a, a clear kind of idea of what that, what a process might look like. And so, you know, I'm going to go back. So we're recording these meetings, right? Nobody else does it. I'm going to go back and make an outline of everything that he just said. And hopefully all of us have, can get a copy of that so that we can, whatever properties we're looking at, we can look at this process and say, okay, where are we in this process and work through it that way? So thank you.
I, I met with Michael yesterday, actually at the coffee shop here in Dunkerville. He has that process outlined already. Would you mind just sharing it with us so we can send it to the council?
I'm happy to do so. Yes, I will do that right after this.
Still going to go back and watch.
Any other questions? Sounds exciting. Thank you.
Um, Mayor.
Thank you all.
All right.
Actually, it's not. He's okay. Uh, so we, you know, at some point, I know, uh, councilwoman Bill requested a list of all the properties owned by the city.
I heard that. I was looking for the police chief and I heard that, so.
But so, and I think we did get that list.
Yes.
And there were some properties on there as well that we might want to consider whether or not we want to put them on the market and get them off our, our hands. And also have some money set aside to do some of this stuff.
So if, if I could, a perfect example of that, you guys already authorized us. Uh, we, we listed for Belmont Place for Sale, which is a vacant piece of property, a perfect example of that. Uh, we had put it out, uh, we notified neighbors and we received zero bids on it. So I think you're retrying something else, I believe, right?
Yes.
Re-advertising that.
Yes, there was an individual that reached out that expressed interest in the property. Unfortunately, she, uh, was reaching out to us past the bid deadline. But because we had received no bids, the, there was an opportunity for her to, to submit a bid. So she's working, uh, through that with, uh, Mr. Brock.
And that's, that's one example, but there, there's quite a few.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item, uh, three D briefing and discussion, FY twenty-four, twenty-five, proposed budget and updates.
Yes, Mayor, um, Ms. Ote is here too. We put this as a placeholder on the agenda in case there's anything you wanted to share with us or in case there's anything you wanted to discuss. Obviously, we have a more in-depth budget workshop coming up September fifth. And at that meeting, I know Ms. Ote has been slaving away. I can smell the smoke coming from our office, uh, where she's trying to figure out how to incorporate the TMRS stuff that we talked about and then bring back something with you with the different tax rates and what it would look like if we're sixty-one cents or sixty cents or fifty-nine or fifty-eight. So, uh, we have quite a few notes that, um, Ms. Ote and I still need to sit down with Mr. Jackson and we're all working through those, um, in preparation for that. But we wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to discuss tonight if there's anything else or anything else you thought of or, or anything else you'd like to share with us.
Not for me, at least.
Mr. Jackson wanted to say something.
Yes, sir.
Well, briefing, keyword brief. Uh, but just to pig, uh, piggyback and echo Mr. Finch's sentiments. Ju- just want to have an opportunity to let you all know that we'll be, uh, between now and the fifth, we'll be following up with you individually as well as seeing if there's, again, any questions, having more of an opportunity to look at the presentation from this past Thursday. Uh, certainly want to make sure that, uh, we're prepared as much as, uh, making sure that you all feel comfortable going into the meeting on the fifth. So we'll be following up with you, um, seeing if there is anything, uh, else that we can discuss or information that we can provide in preparation for the meeting on the fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, regarding executive sessions, we have two on tonight's agenda. Uh, they will be held after the council meeting, but we're going to take every attempt, have a hard stop, uh, wherever we're at on the council agenda at eight thirty, uh, because we actually have a scheduled, uh, meeting with some folks that are coming in. So, uh, with that, um, we'll go ahead and close out our, our session at six fifty-three P M. six-fifty-three PM, and, um, maybe we'll take care of one of the business you have. You'll be in the. Okay, I apologize, we're running a little bit behind, but we're ready to go. So we will open our council meeting for this evening at seven-oh-four PM. We'll start with our invocation, which will be, uh, we're asking, uh, Councilman Coon to, uh, provide our invocation tonight, followed by our flag salutes. Thank you.
You would bow with me, please. Our Father in Heaven, we approach you at this time with humility in our hearts, thanking you, Father, for the precious gift of life. We thank you, Father, for the city, and we thank you for this community, and we thank you, Father, for the good people who live here. We thank you for this occasion that you've given us to be able to come together once again and to consider the good works and good things that can be done in this community, to uplift this community and to bring one another closer together. We pray, Father, that as we consider these items before us this evening, that we might have compassion in our hearts and resolve to do what is good and what's right, and that we consider others above ourselves as we make these decisions. We pray, Father, for our first responders. We pray for our firemen and our policemen, that you might keep them safe and keep them out of the way of harm and danger, and that you might watch over them. And we pray, Father, that you be with our schoolteachers as they prepare to enter into a new school year, that you might give them peace and give them patience. And we pray, Father, that you be with the students, that you might be with them and protect them in their schools. And again, Father, we thank you for all that you've given us, and we thank you for the precious gift of life, and we pray, Father, that you will be with us and be with us in our hearts to help us do all that we can to serve you and to honor you in all that we do. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Coon, will you join us in the pledge?
The pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we're gonna begin with our, um, our reports for this evening, and the first item is mayor's report. And, uh, I just wanna, um, say quickly, give a thanks to the community that came out to a town hall meeting, uh, a week ago or so. And we'll get into the specifics, but it was a really important meeting, uh, and it was a real, uh, good example of, uh, the community coming out to speak their minds about a particular issue. Well, sometimes those meetings can get a little, uh, a little rough. People come in with a lot of passion. This meeting went well. Uh, it was full capacity, and I think the, um, the message was, was heard for elected officials and management from what, what these people had to say about, uh, a decision we're gonna have to make here in the near future about, uh, a development. But I just wanna, again, uh, reiterate the importance for community engagement at that level, uh, and, uh, I'm real proud of, uh, the outcome, uh, of that event, and I hope to see more opportunities to talk to the public about issues like that in the future. So that is my report, and council member reports, and I have, uh, Councilwoman Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to echo, um, thank you to District Four for coming out and all of other surrounding districts who came to the town hall. It was well attended, and, um, second everything that the mayor had to say about it. The boards and commissions, um, interviews that we've been doing have been, we've received a lot of applications, and we have another one scheduled for the twenty-seventh. So if you're still interested, and if the city secretary is still accepting applications, then you have a chance to be interviewed for one of our boards and commissions on the twenty-seventh. Also, um, finally, for the fire department banquet, um, it was a really nice evening, and I would like to say thank you for inviting us to attend your banquet. I really enjoyed meeting, um, you and your families as well. So, thank you.
Councilman Mac Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. That, Dee, that was also one of the things I was gonna talk about, the firefighters banquet. These guys do so much for us, a- a- all of our first responders do for that, so we're very blessed and thankful that we have them. But, but when you find out what our fire department does, and then some of the things that they do, how we have the best response time, w- we've got an amazing crew here. I wanna thank the staff and the council for our proposed, uh, budget, uh, meeting that we had and, and, and what we've gone through, and so the iterations that we're gonna go through as well. Also, uh, you know, our Parks and Rec team, they, they have a movie coming on, uh, Top Gun's gonna be playing out at the park on, on that. And also wanna say a, a word for Robert Brown, because he's retiring at the end of the month, and, and wanna thank Robert Brown from the DIAS for his service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mac Burnett. No further, uh, council reports. Uh, city manager report.
Yes, Mayor, council. Good evening, uh, community champions. I also wanna, uh, start with, uh, recognizing Assistant City Manager Robert Brown, uh, who will be retiring on August thirtieth. He has, uh, really, he, he passionately cares about the Duncanville community, uh, to the point where I'll share with you, he was even here Sunday afternoon. I came in, uh, quickly to grab some stuff, and he was, uh, dealing with an issue for us, and I even said to him, "Aren't you getting ready to retire? Why are you here on a Sunday at one o'clock?" But, but that's the type of guy he is. He, he, he just passionately cares about the community. And it's also my honor and, and privilege to share with you, council, and, and you're certainly aware of this, uh, we conducted a national search for the position of police chief. We had over twenty candidates apply from across the country. Uh, we did, uh, all kinds of different analysis. We started by meeting with the police officers, actually within the department, to see what they wanted, set benchmarks. Uh, we did a scientific survey called a, uh, an analysis, called a Tri-Metrics Report, and there was one guy that kept coming to the top over and over and over again, and I already knew how to pronounce his name. And, uh, so it's, it's my honor and privilege to, uh, be able to share with you, uh, Mayor and council. My recommendation is to appoint Matthew Stogner permanently as our police chief, and I would ask you to, uh, support that resolution this evening.
Thank you. Applause. That was the first. Okay, um, I'm gonna step forward. Is the mic on down there? Is this mic on? Okay. Thank you. Everybody's probably wondering, "Who are the people in the green shirts?" Well, I'm about to tell you. I guess, when was it, uh, more than a month ago now, that I was invited to go out to the, um, Dog Training Club of Dallas County? Now, not too many people know, unless you had the privilege to take your dog there, that they've existed in Duncanville for fifty years. And, uh, I had the privilege, a few years ago, I got a dog, and I found out the dog wanted to be the boss in me. So, I had, uh, done some inspections, probably twenty-five years ago out there, and so I remembered they were there. I was calling all over Dallas County trying to find a training facility, and, shoot, there went right here. So I went there, and it worked. My dog trained me even better. But, in all honesty, it was a pleasure to go out there last month to a barbecue and meeting that they had, and I think you all have close to two-hundred members. Their facility was packed. If you've never been down there, and you have pets, you should go down there. They train, and I'm gonna let Ruth talk about that. They train for all types of issues with dogs, g- good and bad. So with that, I'd like to ask Ruth to come forward. Thank you. And I'm gonna read the proclamation. Now, I've already presented the proclamation, so this is worded as though I've already presented it, but no surprises here. The Dog Training Club, whereas, the Dog Training Club of Dallas County... The Dog Training Club, whereas the Dog Training Club of Dallas County, a nonprofit organization, was formed in 1974 by a group of dedicated dog obedience trainers and whereas dog obedience training classes is offered by the Dog Training Club of Dallas County have proven to be a great influence in educating the general public as to the responsibilities of dog ownership, much to the benefit of the city and the public at large. And whereas, as conducted by the volunteers of Dog Training Club of Dallas County, that's 100% volunteers, obedience training for both purebred and mixed breed dogs has shown to be a great value in producing happy, well-behaved canine citizens. These dogs are a great joy to their owners as well as being appreciated by their neighbors and other citizens and whereas by providing all breed training programs, these dedicated volunteers have improved the lives of thousands of dogs and their owners with not only obedience skills, championships, manners, and social skills, but also high-level training involving therapy and nose work. Whereas to commemorate their 50th year anniversary in our community, the Dog Training Club of America Dallas County Incorporated will host a 50th year anniversary celebration for members and guests. Now therefore, I, great Contreras, the mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby call upon all citizens of Duncanville and upon all civic and community organizations to acknowledge that June 2024 marked the DCTC DC in their history of training, dedication, and volunteer services, 50 years of dog training excellence. I call upon all Duncanville citizens to acknowledge the importance of the work and the effort being done by the DCC DC in the city of Duncanville and I further invite all citizens to join me in applauding the all-volunteer staff of the Dog Training Club of Dallas County as they celebrate 50 years of outstanding training, showing, volunteering, and community achievements. The dogs at DTCC has impacted, has impacted some of whom were once considered lost causes and have become a source of pride and pleasure to their families and recognized as good canine citizens of our community.
Yes. Thank you.
Do you want to tell the folks a little bit about the team?
So the first thing I would like to say is I would like to say thank you to Mayor Contreras and also thank you to the esteemed council members. Thank you. Thank you for recognizing us. As it was mentioned, for the past 50 years, the Dog Training Club of Dallas County has proudly operated as a 100% all-volunteer club. Thank you to our members, which, as you know, is no small feat, 100% all-volunteer. And we have proudly operated as such and we are committed to continuing this tradition and we look forward to another 50 years of serving our community by helping dogs become well-mannered members of their families and the community. So thank you for the proclamation and also thank you for this honor. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to our members, without them, none of this would be possible.
In-person citizen comments will be heard during the regular session and keeping with the councils, city council's rules of procedure adopted on June 4th, 2024, electronic mail comments will no longer be read aloud. Paper copies will be provided to the city council at the DIAS. Comments will be made part of the public record in the minutes. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matters of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda and such non-agenda issues may be referred to the city staff for research and any further action. All persons addressing are subject to council-adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. At this time, two-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic and please, for those who come up, state your name and address before your two minutes start. Thank you. First up is Katie Edwards.
Hi, my name is Katie Edwards. I live at 226 Mizell Street and I'm here to advocate for UME Preparatory Academy Junior High's temporary relocation at Duncanville First Baptist Church. And we thought we were all in place on Friday and our students were gonna start on Monday and I received an email Monday afternoon that that's not the case, that the fire marshal did not show up to the inspection on Friday and came Monday morning and left our administrator with a long list of items that had never before been mentioned and so now the students are displaced again. And we're into our second week of school and they're still not in the building where they're supposed to be meeting. So I think we're awaiting confirmation again today if that's gonna happen, but if it doesn't happen, our students need a place to be in school. They need continuity, they need to be on their schedule. Our teachers need to teach and our students need to learn and I am just begging the city, if something is not happening today, that you intervene quickly. I'm also wanting to advocate for our city because this isn't fair to UME or our city. If this is the process that people have to follow to bring business into our city or to bring good things into our city, I can't imagine that anybody is gonna want to go through the process that our school has had to go through to, just for a temporary location. I can't imagine what it would be like for an even permanent location. And so I just am pleading with you to help our students and help our city. I love both very, very much and I want both of them to be successful and I know that you guys have the power to do that and I trust you. Thank you.
Philip James.
Hi, council. My name is Kennedy James at 910 Green Terrace Lane. I'm speaking about protected bike lanes today. Being provided to you are the minutes from November 5th, 2019's meeting.
Anybody want these minutes from there to be talked about? City Secretary, we'll take it.
Thank you. If you will follow me to page four, you will see that although the bike lanes were approved from US 67 to Main Street, these were contracted and done. Thank you for that. However, a supplemental corridor study was initiated for the Daniel Dell Road Corridor from South Clark Road to Eastern City Limit. Initial study findings were presented to council on September 24th, 2019. On page five, we have recommendation for lane-divided roadway with hike/bike trail on the north side meets comp plan guiding principles, meets citizen desire to be bike-friendly, similar multi-modular facility to neighboring communities, less than 10 feet trail provides opportunity for potential grant funding, highest level of safety for all users, highest cycling comfortability, I'm sorry, fits with an existing ROW, maintains satisfactory LOS for Condor and lowest cost alternatives besides zero-bill option. Thank you.
Okay, I had two cards.
You have one, say Philip James.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right. So I will be Philip James to take up where my very competent daughter left off. As she said, this has been voted on 2019. Now, we want to take a look, if everybody would've got this copy, in 2019, Councilman Anderson stated that the recommendation provides an easy and the cheapest way to fix the bicycle lanes. And he also stated out on that date that no one's property, no one property taxes would be increased and additional, that would be a smart way to get our citizens to stay in shape. Bike trails are part of the comprehensive plan of the citizens voted on this. And if you, and then if you had this copy, it goes on to say that even the school that's on Daniel Dell Village Tech, they receive complaints that it's unsafe for the kids to walk to school from Daniel Dell. The bike lanes might relieve some of the Village Tech traffic. "We are planning and building the city for the future," said the dean of that school, "for the future citizens to connect with the surrounding cities." And I have just a list of everyone that was in city council meeting that day. It's exactly 17 members that voted in favor for the protected bike lanes, all that in highlighted green. It was two that thought that it was not necessary. And finally, let's see, I got 35 seconds. Councilmember Anderson stated that the plan in place was an opportunity to present itself and the council needs to listen to all the citizens of Duncanville and do what is needed for the health and the wellment of the citizens of Duncanville and provide protected bike lanes. Now, this is the final point. Councilmember Monte Anderson made a motion to approve the item as stated. Councilman Mark Cook seconded that motion. The vote was cast and the vote was 5/4 and 2 against. The item passed. So with that, council, I'd like you guys to please put consideration on protected bike lanes and could you tell me when you're gonna think about that?
Mr. James, just for the record, your address is?
910 Green Terrace Lane.
Thank you.
All right.
Erica Browning.
Hi, Erica Browning, 442 East Cherry Street. I just wanted to share an observation that I made this week. We see DCEDC incentive grants come up on the agenda periodically and I think there are two tonight. And yet people still complain about how our businesses look and Main Street and I've been wondering why is that? But the other day I was driving up Main Street and you know, when somebody's driving, they're just looking at the curb, basically, and you know, like for example, Redbird Lanes, they redid their whole facade, but we don't look at that when we're just driving down Main Street. And so I'm gonna send you all a video that my husband took while we were driving up Main Street, just as you would see while you're driving and you can, it's just really obvious what the problem is. And so my suggestion is when we're offering these grants, we include a section where the business owners can redo the section of like the parking lot by the curb and add some plants or something like that. That would make a huge difference in just the visual appeal and it's something that could just be built into the grant. Thank you.
Terry Webb.
Terry Webb, 11708 County Road 4090, Scurry, Texas. Former 50-year citizen of Duncanville and 34-year employee here in Duncanville. Council, mayor, city manager, thank you so much for the consideration, for reinstating the COLAs back and for our retirees and the updated service credits for our current employees. I know the city manager is challenged with finding, funding for this, but I'm sure he's up to that task. We do appreciate very, very much the opportunity to at least bring it back up, the discussions that you have had, the support that you have given it. As retirees of Duncanville, we thank you so much for that. I retired in 07, I guess it was, and that's when we stopped COLAs, was the year I retired. And so we've had, I guess officially, we've had three cost of living raises in 17 years. So just to give you an idea how it affects us as retirees and how it affects your employees as they look at their packages and they look at the benefits they have compared to the cities around them. And once the employee winds up in Duncanville, which we hire great people and I'm proud of some of the ones that we have hired, but they also sit around and they talk and they look and they say, okay, my family, what can I do for my family? Well, if I can benefit by going to a city that offers these benefits, that's what happens to them. And so thank you so much for the consideration, Mr. City Manager. I know you're challenged with funding for everything and I appreciate the opportunity for you to look at that and get that back onboard. Thank you again.
Jack Long.
Jack Long, 13220 Woodhaven Tribe, Farmers Branch, Texas, 75234. Good evening, mayors, city council, city manager, staff, and counselor. I've worked with that man a lot on certain issues in Duncanville. I was a retiree after 31 years of service, the last 11 years as chief of police, and I'm just echoing what Chief Webb has said about the repeating COLA for retirees and the updated service credits for employees. It was taken away in 2007 from us and I know that you have worked diligently the last two budget sessions to reinstate that repeating COLA. And I could stand here for a minute and nine seconds and say, thank you 289 times for all of us retirees, for all the hard work that you've put into this. But I'm gonna make that one, my two minutes tonight because Chief Webb's always on me. Again, thank you for all the city staff that's worked on this as well and especially City Manager Finch. He did have a lot on his plate and he's certainly been an asset in this process and I applaud each and every one of you. Quickly, I want to recognize two people tonight. Matthew Stogner, chief of police for the city of Duncanville. I hired him. Robert Brown, 40 years of public service to this community, to the community of Waco, Dallas Police Department, University Park, and never my time, sorry, Terry. But this man has given 40 years of his life to public service. He is to be applauded and I will be at his retirement next week. Thank you.
This concludes the citizens' input portion of our meeting tonight. We'll move on to the consent agenda. City Secretary, will you please read the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 4A, consider the minutes of the following meetings. Special call meeting on July 16th, 2024. Council meeting July 16th, 2024. Joint meeting with DCEDC on July 30th. Joint meeting with library board on August 1st. Special call meeting on August 5th. And special call meeting on August 8th. Item 4B, consider a resolution approving the proposal for city-paid employee and retiree medical prescription and dental plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for a one-year agreement. Item 4C, consider a resolution authorizing the final payment of $545,435.78 to Core Construction Services of Texas Incorporated for pay applications 18 and 19 for the construction of fire station number 271. Item 4D, consider an ordinance amending the FY 2324 budget by appropriating revenue and amending expenditures for the utility fund to cover the increase to Trinity River Authority expenses. Item 4E, consider a resolution approving the inter-local agreement between the city of Duncanville and Dallas County to provide highway accident investigation services in an amount not to exceed $60,770. Item 4F, council to consider a resolution approving the assignment of private activity bond authority to the Texas Department of bond authority to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
Counsel, any questions or concerns? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Councilman Mac Burnett, second by Councilman Coontz. Please vote. Unanimously approved. Okay, we move on to items for individual consideration. Uh, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, we have two executive sessions to follow this meeting, um, to start promptly at eight-thirty. And, uh, we'll start with item B. Council to consider a resolution confirming the city manager's appointment of Matthew Stogner as police chief. Council, uh, City Manager Finch?
Well, thank you, mayor, counsel. Actually, I'm gonna ask Chief Stogner to approach the podium, uh, and give you a chance to have a discussion with him. I've, I've already had an opportunity, but, um, I have to tell you, this was a thorough process. I have never seen Chief Stogner sweat so much and turn so red as we asked him some pretty difficult questions. This was not a give-me. Uh, we put him through the wringer, and I can't tell you how proud I was that he kept rising to the top.
Well, that is very kind. Um, not sure if you guys need to do anything. Assuming you guys are, um, gonna ask me some questions, but I will tell you, um, you know, looking back when I started in ninety-eight, you, you have dreams in your life, and, and this is one of those that you really don't know that would come true until you're standing here, speaking with you guys on the dais now. You know, I'm sure Chief Long, when he hired me and taught me some tough lessons in my career, probably thought there's no way this guy's gonna be up on the dais doing this stuff, so I appreciate it. I, I've learned some tough lessons in my career. I've, you know, had the opportunity to work with some, some great people, great leaders. Um, I am without question eager to get started, to make changes that are, respect the history of the, of the police department, but also make the necessary changes to move us into the future. Technology, uh, things like that, connecting with the community, working with the community to solve these issues that we have, um, 'cause unless you do that, these problems are gonna persist. So I think it's important you have a good team, which we do, there's no question. Um, I respect every one of you guys on the dais because there's absolutely, I, I say this to all of our people, and I, and I've told you guys this in the past, you guys support us when it's not a popular decision. Police in general, first responders in general, that doesn't happen everywhere, and we are very happy and very proud, uh, to be your law enforcement officers and be your first responders here in the city. So thank you.
Counsel, any questions? I hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, we do have a question, I'm sorry, Ms. Cherry Brown?
I just wanna make sure that you always keep that smile and the wonderful personality that you have.
Well, thank you. Um, there's no question, there's gonna be a lot of work. I will say this unequivocally, um, Doug Finch, the city manager, is the main reason why I'm up here, his leadership. Um, there's few people that I trust unequivocally, and he's one of them. And that's not saying that because I'm standing up here, that's saying that because we've developed a really good relationship these past nine, nine months, eight months, um, and he's the reason why I'm up here. So you guys have a really good person leading this city. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mac Burnett, your light's on?
I'm gonna make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Ms. Cherry Brown. Please vote. There we go, all right. It's approved unanimously.
Thank y'all. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank y'all. I'm gonna go sit down now.
Just one second while, uh, City Manager makes a comment?
I, I just want to, uh, mayor and counsel, thank you so much for supporting that. Uh, I'm, I'm very, very confident in our new police chief. We will be scheduling a swearing-in ceremony and inviting you and the public for his actual official pinning on of the badge and that, and we'll give you more information, uh, when we schedule that, probably in September, so.
Thank you. Item C was removed from the, uh, item for individual consideration, so we'll move on to item D. Consider a resolution authorizing approval of incentive grants by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation to Cedar Park Shopping Center, LTD, in the amount not to exceed twenty-thousand dollars for a building located at two-oh-seven through two-three-thirty-one South Cedar Ridge Drive, Duncanville, Texas, seven-five-one-one-six. And speaking on behalf of this matter is our, uh, economic development director, Victor Barrera.
Good evening and thank you. Uh, so what you have before you is a, up for consideration is a twenty-thousand-dollar grant for proposed ADA improvements of the shopping center. The shopping center is owned by the Wiseman Group. Uh, this evening, we have Sandy Scott, the vice president of property management, that is available, uh, this evening to answer any question that the council may have. Uh, the shopping center is located at the cross street of Wheatland Road and South Cedar Ridge Drive. Um, the shopping center, as you may know, is anchored by retailers such as Aldi and Dollar Tree. Um, several months ago, there was a presentation to the DCEDC about some capital improvements that were proposed to the, um, to the center. Uh, those improvements have, um, have taken a step back, that request has been withdrawn. The proposed improvements were just a little bit too much for them to handle at this time, but we are having conversations with them about other improvements in the shopping center. Uh, we had improvements with them as recent, as, um, I'd like to say, three weeks ago about improvements to the parking lot, um, changing some of the parking lot fixtures and including, uh, landscaping island and just bringing a li- little bit more color to, to the center than what's already there. Um, but we will have that application, that presentation, um, in the, in the weeks and months to come. Um, but, uh, a couple of weeks ago, before the DCEDC was a proposal for several improvements to the property, including some repairs and upgrades to the roof, mechanical equipment, along with the ADA improvements, of which the DCEDC felt that it was best to participate and provide assistance with the ADA improvements, uh, and not the other improvements, as they felt that those were deemed more of the property owner's responsibility and more along the lines of a property maintenance, and that's not something that the, that the DCEDC wanted to participate in. Um, the current estimated property value is one-point-one-million dollars, and the building is approximately fifty-one-thousand square feet. Its, uh, estimated occupancy rate is at ninety percent, uh, and there is currently two vacancies. I apologize for that error in the slide, but there is two vacancies and one, uh, one restaurant and another, uh, space, but in totality, it's about seven-thousand of the fifty-one-thousand square feet that's currently vacant in that center. These are photos of the center in its existing condition. Uh, these are the bids that were obtained, as you will see, the proposed improvement costs are approximately a hundred-thousand dollars. The, uh, you will see there the estimated, um, property value at one-point-one-million dollars, the proposed investment for the ADA improvements at about ninety-five or a hundred-thousand dollars, and again, what's being asked for is twenty, twenty-thousand dollars of the ninety-five-thousand-dollar expenses, uh, the estimated property tax at seventy-two-hundred dollars, and then you have the estimated revenue as part of this participation. These are images and depictions of the proposed, uh, ADA improvements. And again, these proposed improvements are throughout the site and not just in one specific area. And that is it. Any questions?
Yes, sir. I'll go ahead and start. Uh, it's not a question, it's really a comment about, um, you know, we, we give a lot of grants, and I understand, uh, the good that comes from that. This one in particular, having to do with the, um, ADA compliance and, and bringing things up to, uh, a higher standard, is, uh, is something that every city suffers with on public property and as well as on private property. I, uh, was building official when the ADA came about, and I had to, uh, I had the pleasure, actually, of being part of a staff, assembled team to evaluate many of our buildings here in Duncanville, and as a result of that, we were able to bring a lot of our, um, well, a lot of the areas we're lacking in up to compliance. We didn't get everything, but, um, we got, we got a lot. Even right out here in the foyer, I remember, um, pushing on those doors with plungers to make sure they opened easy enough for folks. So I'm saying all this to say that when it comes to this type of an improvement for the amount that we're in to invest in this, I think for the, uh, large amount of people in our communities that have mobile disabilities and, uh, other types of disabilities, uh, unless you sit and watch, sometimes if you have a family member, you don't realize, you don't stop and think, that the smallest little thing like a, a one-inch threshold is difficult to maneuver for somebody that can't lift their feet very high or are on a walker or in a wheelchair. So, um, I just want to say that, um, I'm, I'm in total support of this, uh, simply from my experiences in the past, my awareness of, uh, and I'm sure many of you share that awareness with your own personal situations with family members and friends, so I, I'm just gonna say that I, I support this. Any other questions or comments? I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Mac Burnett.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Gooden. Vote? The, uh, most carries six to one with, uh, uh, six in the affirmative and, uh, Mr. Coontz in, um, opposition. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, item E. Five E, consider a resolution authorizing approval of incentive grants by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, DCEDC, to First Peter Four-Ten LLC, in the amount not to exceed seventy-one-thousand dollars for a building located at twelve-twenty-three Crestdale Suite A, Duncanville, Texas, seven-five-one-three-seven. Again, uh, economic development director, Mr. Barrera.
Uh, thank you again. So the nature of this grant request, um, is seventy-one-thousand dollars for improvements to the property, specifically improvements to the building, um, i.e. by the way of painting and to the, to the parking lots. Um, this is a multi-tenant, oh, so sorry, I just jumped in, I apologize. All right, there we go, apologize about that. Um, so this is a property that is in totality eight-thousand square feet at a hundred percent occupancy. Uh, the owners, uh, First Peter Four-Ten LLC, are also, uh, uh, business owners in the building. Uh, the managing partners, Ty and Carolyn Thompson, are the managing partners of the LLC, but they also own Tech Chefs, which is an electrical service, uh, company that occupies a portion of the building. Uh, the other tenant is an upholstery, an upholstery business and an HVAC company. Um, back in July, this grant request was presented to the DCEDC, and they unanimously approved a grant in the amount of twenty-thousand dollars, excuse me, twenty-two-thousand dollars for grants and forty-nine-thousand dollars for paving, uh, with a total grant amount of seventy-one-thousand dollars. The estimated appraised value is two, excuse me, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars, the total proposed improvement cost, seventy-one-thousand dollars approximately, and the estimated city property tax, two-thousand-one-hundred-eighteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, you have the twenty percent of total capital expenditures at approximately fourteen-thousand dollars, and the estimated, uh, sales tax of a, a eight-thousand-square-foot building is twenty-thousand dollars. Um, here are the list of bids that were obtained by the, by the property owner and a breakdown of the, of the grant, again, twenty-two-thousand dollars for paint, forty-nine-thousand dollars for pavement for the total grant, um, approval or consideration of seventy-one-thousand dollars. These, uh, are the areas of the proposed parking lot improvements, uh, areas highlighted in green. These are pictures of the parking, of the condition of the parking lot and the, uh, exterior of, of the building. As you can see, the building could use a little bit of TLC, and that is it.
Thank you, mayor. So I drove and looked at the area to do like a little site inspection, and the gates are closed, and any improvements, um, are really kinda, are the gates open during business hours where the improvements can easily be seen? The investment that we're making, um, can contribute to the improvements, um, in the area.
Um, it's my understanding that the gates are open during the course of the normal business hours, um, because they have fleet and vehicles moving, uh, coming in and out of the property, and the end of closed business day, they, they close it.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Coontz?
Thank you, mayor. Could, could you go back, uh, I guess to the... Or, yes, sir, uh, the slide after that, the image that you just showed there?
This one?
Right before that, the aerial view, the map, that one, yes, sir. Because I know, th- this is in my district, sixty-seven is somewhere around here, right? Okay. But I guess to, to Councilwoman Gooden's point, uh, and Crestdale's a dead end, correct? Thank you.
Okay, I just, um, wanna mention that, you know, a lot of times when we, we do these similar grants, uh, uh, around town, they're in high-visibility areas and well-attended shopping centers, and, uh, while they're, uh, tax-producing businesses, area, uh, businesses in these areas, and in particular, this area, which I'm very familiar with, hardly get any attention. They certainly, um, are off the beaten path, but they're tax-paying businesses nonetheless, many of them have been there a long time. So while we're sharing opportunities for, uh, issuing grants around the community, um, I appreciate the fact that we are equally representing those areas that, they, they're in need of improvement, uh, no doubt, in that area right there, so everything we can do to help them improve, and when somebody comes in and wants to invest to improve the buildings down in that area, it's building by building, step by step, but eventually that will improve above and beyond what it's, the, the history shows that, uh, those properties to be in, in terms of lack of maintenance, so, um, I appreciate this. Mr. Mac Burnett?
Thank you, mayor. This might be a comment for the city manager, uh, but I, I think it's good if we have our applicants, uh, here when, when they're doing a presentation a- a- as well. Also, um, you, you know, I'm supportive of this area because this is an area that's, that, that has an opportunity to, to improve itself. Uh, also, on the bids, I'd, I'd also like to see that the companies address and stuff in there. I think we try to use Duncanville companies as well, and I, and I think that's something that we need to see. Thank you. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Mac Burnett. Second by Councilwoman Karen Cherry Brown. Please vote. Unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, staff and board reports, Mr. Ag, briefing presentation on See My Legacy Crowdfunding and Community Engagement Platform.
Yes, sir. Um, evening, mayor, counsel, city manager, Tyler Ag, assistant director for Parks and Recreation. Um, I'm, uh, presenting tonight on the See My Legacy, uh, platform. It's a, uh, new digital tool that the city hopes to help engage, um, its community and, uh, bring some crowdfunding and fundraising opportunities that we hope to take advantage of to help us, um, you know, get better programs, better, uh, equipment. us, um, you know, get better programs, better uh, equipment, supplies, pretty much anything we need. Uh, they, uh, the representative for See My Legacy, um, prepared a, a brief video for y'all to watch tonight, um, so I'm gonna skip to that slide at the end of the presentation, play the video, and if you have any questions, I can follow up with any slides and answer them for you, so.
No action to be taken. No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Agie.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next item, six B, a briefing to City Council regarding the Mexican Independence Day celebration. Uh, Mr. Barrera.
Good evening. It's Loli Shiday, Assistant Economic Development Director. Uh, today I would like to share some information about the Mexican Independence Day celebration on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, in Armstrong Park. Can you hear me now? Okay. So in front of you, you have a tentative schedule of events, and let me start by saying, when we initially did our schedule, we had a nine o'clock PM, no, we had a ten o'clock PM, um, closed date, uh, closed time, but after we had our internal meeting, realized that Parks and Rec would have to stay at least till ten, until the vendors shut down, and then they would be there late, we pushed the time back to nine PM. So the official time for our last activity in the park at this time is nine PM. Okay, moving forward. Um, I don't know if you can see this. This is the park layout, and we have volunteers where those little circles are, so we have some community volunteers that are going to work with us to make sure we have volunteers helping with the vendors, helping with the patrons, and the citizens, and the bands, and things of that nature. The layout is pretty much the same as what they did for July fourth. We just added some lighting and added some additional volunteers. And also, we added a dance floor next to the stage. Finally, we get to the parade, and this parade is a little bit, the parade route is a little bit shorter than the normal one, the July fourth and the Christmas. This was proposed by Sergeant McCarty, and it starts um, right there by the basketball courts, and then goes to up Main, uh, up Wheatland and goes down Main, and you can see where it ends right there on Nance Street in that area. So it is a shorter parade, um, but it still enables us to have some, some floats and cars and trucks and apparatus, and dancing horses, which is what we already have signed up, so. And that's another vision, version of the parade. Currently, we do have four parade entrances, entries paid and ready to go. We have ten
All right, thanks so much, everyone. Bye-bye.
All right, so as Kayla explained, the purpose of the C-Me Legacy app, we stumbled across this platform looking for some type of manageable component for the memorial banner program that we were asked to start here in Duncanville. After, you know, following up with them and seeing what this platform could do, the sky is the limit, the possibilities, you can pretty much utilize it for any type of fundraising, crowdsourcing, volunteer engagement, community engagement, you name it. But not to take up too much of your time, just if you have any questions on it, please let me know, and I'll do my best to answer.
Councilman Pennebaker?
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Agee. Just a few questions, giving idea on cost?
Yes, sir. So it's $141 per month totaling $1699 a year. The cost is pretty low, but they are specifically for cities and municipalities to capitalize on fundraising and sponsorship and crowdfunding. So that's, they pretty much were created for this situation.
Perfect. Do, um, did they give you any examples of municipalities or organizations using this that we could look at?
Not in Texas. There are a couple in northern states that we could reference, but not, not here in Texas.
Okay, I'd like to get a list and see those.
Yes, sir.
Did y'all talk about if we discontinue the program, what happens to the site memorial plaques and the QR codes and?
Yes, so we keep the memorial plaques and the page is still live. We just wouldn't be able to add more stuff.
Okay, and I know we don't want to take too much time here and wait for more official presentation, but last question. If there's any existing memorial benches, is that something y'all talked about as far as adding that to the site?
I don't think we have currently any memorial benches. We have the memorial park, oh, we have one? Apologies. I was thinking of memorial park where the, the park or statue isn't online. So ideally, this platform, we would be able to market and communicate and engage the community by putting up pictures and, and a brief mock-up of what that, that park and dedication memorial, memorial park is, is dedicated towards.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilwoman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. At least twice a year, I volunteer and a lot of us do for, for the PIP program that is joined with the church here in Duncanville. Is this something that we could use for it as well? Being that we're in partnership with some, another entity?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. So the intent is to utilize it for all affiliated city events and opportunities. So Keep Duncanville Beautiful, the Arts Commission, pretty much any boards or commission or activity that we're working with, we would hope to post volunteer or, you know, communicate to volunteers through there, get sign-ups so we can better plan and engage the community for those events as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd have Councilmember MacBurnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, because when I looked at the policy explanation, it says the platform's $2,589. And so I'm seeing $141, so that's, you know, roughly $1,700. So I'm trying to, are we getting a deal or what's, what's, what's happening?
So there are two versions of the platform, but the one that we specked out was the price, the $141 a month.
Okay. You know, I, I mean, I, I think this is a wonderful opportunity, again, to tell a story, have something in depth in that line. And I guess, C-Major, I'm kind of wondering, is Parks and Rec gonna be the one that's gonna be in charge of this, or is it gonna eventually go over to? Okay, well, I mean, we're, we're talking about it spanning across and, and so it's like, so I'm just curious how this is gonna fall. But anyway, I'll make the motion to approve.
Well, we're not, we're not, no action.
Forget it. Thank you. Let's go. Let's go.
Finally found a way to stop him. All right, thank you, Mr. MacBurnett. Mr. Vera Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. So, man, I, I think this is absolutely wonderful. Because a lot of times, we don't know what events are happening, what opportunities we have to, to volunteer, and it, it shows a record. So I definitely want the dog park on there first, and then we can put the lab property on there second, and then go from there. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, ju- just to Councilmember MacBurnett's question, so, because when I was seeing this, I was thinking, because it's online rights, so this, so this wouldn't be, public information officer and that department wouldn't have anything to do with this. This is strictly parks. As far as like the management, there's a page here to be managed, right? So, great question, Councilmember Good. So what we're encouraging all of our departments to do is work with our public information officer before anything goes public to make sure that, you know, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and those types of things. But the primary responsibility rests with the department. So because this is predominantly parks, and we still haven't had those conversations exactly, but I would anticipate this resting with parks, but working with the other departments, specifically the PIO.
And then, in addition to the annual amount, so any tags or the boards, the dedications, the benches, all, all those things are, have their own costs, right?
Yes, sir. So the QR codes you get with each campaign you create, so you ideally could find your own vendors to print those QR codes onto, to save some of that cost if we didn't want to go with the metal plaques that they offer as well, so.
And then I would agree with Councilman Pennebaker. I'd want to see some, maybe some other cities are participating in this program and see what it looks like.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No action to be taken, no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Agee.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, 6B, a briefing to City Council regarding the Mexican Independence Day Celebration. Mr. Barrera. Not Mr. Barrera.
Good evening. It's Loli Shiday, Assistant Economic Development Director. Today, I would like to share some information about the Mexican Independence Day Celebration on September 16th, 2024, in Armstrong Park. Can you hear me now? Okay. So in front of you, you have a tentative schedule of events. And let me start by saying, when we initially did our schedule, we had a nine o'clock PM, no, we had a 10 o'clock PM closed date, closed time. But after we had our internal meeting, realized that Parks and Rec would have to stay at least till 10, until the vendors shut down, and then they would be there late, we pushed the time back to 9:00 PM. So the official time for our last activity in the park at this time is 9:00 PM. Okay, moving forward. I don't know if you can see this. This is the park layout, and we have volunteers, where those little circles are. So we have some community volunteers that are going to work with us to make sure we have volunteers helping with the vendors, helping with the patrons, and the citizens, and the bands, and things of that nature. The layout is pretty much the same as what they did for July 4th. We just added some lighting and added some additional volunteers. And also, we added a dance floor next to the stage. Finally, we get to the parade, and this parade is a little bit, the parade route is a little bit shorter than the normal one, the July 4th and the Christmas. This was proposed by Sergeant McCarty. And it starts right there by the basketball courts, and then goes to up Main, up Wheatland, and goes down Main. And you can see where it ends, right there on Nance Street in that area. So it is a shorter parade, but it still enables us to have some, some floats and cars and trucks and apparatus, and dancing horses, which is what we already have signed up. So. And that's another vision, version of the parade. Currently, we do have four parade entrances, entries paid and ready to go. We have 10 vendors, food and retail vendors signed up. We also have about, we have two sponsors right now. That is Frost Bank and Star Transit. And then we have several people who are still in the process of signing up. That's the end of our presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. You go to the website to sign up?
Right now, we're going through Eventbrite.com for every, for the parade and the food vendors to register. And then we have the Intergov self-service portal for them to get their permits.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Gooden?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. Dancing horses, will someone be assigned to clean up behind the horses, the street? Because we know horses do what horses do.
Yes, the company that came to us about that, they have that built into their whole system. They're ready for us. And in addition, they're gonna be the little end of the parade, just in case they miss something.
Okay. And then the second question, funding for the event is funded?
Through special events that's in the general fund, and through sponsorships and paying, the paid vendors and parade entries.
Okay, so DCDC is sponsoring some of it as well. Okay, thank you.
Mr. MacBurnett?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Day, for this. Can you tell us a little bit about the, the different, like, starting at 7:15, and the El Grito, and the International Sonora, Alicia Del?
Yes, so we actually have three very well-known bands that will be performing. The one, and please excuse my Spanish, I'm not proficient, but Melissa Del Rancho. One of the members, I believe, is from Duncanville, did go to Duncanville High School for a short period of time, and has been anxious to be able to perform here in Duncanville. So Three Amigos Entertainment is actually procuring all of the bands for us. We have talked to the Mexican consulate in Dallas, and they have agreed to get somebody out here for us. We don't have a name yet. They just want to wait till it gets closer, because they're getting pulled from a lot of different directions. So we want to make sure that they are able to get here and do the El Grito. That seems to be very exciting for a lot of people. Council, I believe you've gotten an email that you could also participate in the opening ceremonies and the closing ceremonies, so that we can have some presence and greet everybody to the program.
Mr. Pennebaker?
Thank you, Ms. Day. Just as far as promotion, are y'all gonna be, what are you gonna be doing for promotion to the community?
Well, we've gotten posters out. I've been going to the larger, I've went to like apartments. We're going to restaurants, well-known restaurants in the area. Also, the information officer has been putting out Facebook as the MC, Min Mori. He used to be a DJ on the radio, and he did a few promos with our public information officer just the other day, and that's been going out. Also, the bands, like I said, they're very well-known, and they've been doing quite a bit of promotion on their Facebook and their social media. As of now, we actually have, I think, 800 people signed up on the free, just for the free. And that's just the people who sign up. I mean, it's a free event, so I'm pretty sure we're gonna have quite a few more people than that.
Fix that, kid. And can I get some posters?
You sure can.
Okay. Got some places for them. Thank you.
And we have some note cards, too, so it's easy to put those out as well.
Thank you.
Our postcards.
Okay, no further action, no further comments. Thank you, Ms. Day.
Thank you.
Receive the library department quarterly report, Mr. Velazquez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Hila Velazquez, Library Director. So just to catch up here, we recently had a vacancy, a part-time vacancy in our technical service department, and we did put out that. And we interviewed about eight folks for that, and got a good crowd turnout. So hopefully, they'll be starting in about a week for us. We actually had about 100 people show interest in that position, so it was very popular. And that will be, library will be fully staffed at that point. And then one thing I forgot to put on the staff update, on a personal note, I'll be celebrating my seven-year anniversary as director tomorrow, so yay for me. So we did, our youth service department recently did a meet-the-teacher night over at Maryville Elementary. They met with 311 students and parents. And that was a great event for them to promote library services to those folks, let them know what we have available for them. And to give you some Best Southwest Consortium numbers, recently, over the last few months, we've had about 1,200 items requested by other libraries from Duncanville. Duncanville patrons have requested about 1,100 items from other of their Best Southwest partners. And we've had 380 or so folks come in from other libraries to check out materials from us directly. Our biggest time of year is the summer, when we do our summer reading club. So here's some highlights for here, then I will give you some breakdowns on some of our stats for that. This year's theme was adventure. We had several programs, animal programs, which always very popular, things like that, petitions and jugglers and things. So for this year, we had 261 completed reading logs. We offered 92 programs with almost 3,000 total attendees for these programs. Our kickoff party, we had almost 800 folks attend that kickoff party. Seventeen team volunteers assisted us with 67 hours, 67 hours of support. Our prizes included various free books and coupons and things like that from our various local businesses. And then we also had, this year, we had four grand prize winners of bicycles and safety gear, which were provided us by our friends at the Duncanville Library, which we greatly appreciate that. And here are pictures of our very happy bicycle winners. They were drawn out of those folks who completed their reading logs during the course of the summer. One other piece of, sorry, one other piece of, that I wasn't about to include in this because it got to me late, as you know, we did conduct a community survey recently. The library board is busy at this moment, conducting the final analysis on that. So I will be providing those breakdowns to you at some point. But we did have over 400 participants in that survey, which is the largest number we've ever had in that. So we've, we're getting a lot of good information that we can spin out and improve our services and what we offer to our community as well. But I will provide more of that information for y'all in the future. So, any questions?
Council? Round three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so at this point, we're going to recess into executive session at 8:22 PM. Thank you all very much for coming.
One of the councilmen, we only had four of us here, or three of us here and there was only three council members and someone tried to walk out of the room before they voted, break the law. And they made the motion and got it passed before they left the room.
Okay, so going back on live and as the result of the executive session, there are no actions to be taken.
That is correct, Mary.
So we will close our regular session at 10:17 PM. We're adjourned.
Thank you.